This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome. This is the meeting of the Vator City Council. It is 6:05 PM on June 4th, 2025. Roll call.
Jason Daly.
Here.
Randy Hall.
Mr. Hall, spoiler alert, I was gonna do it in the mayor's report. Mr. Hall did resign from his position. His position was up for reelection this year, but he just couldn't finish out the rest of the year. So Mr. Hall did resign this morning.
John Hurt.
Here.
Michael Ferguson.
Here.
Mike Parsons.
Here.
Mayor Shai.
Here. And we have quorum.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor's report. The Fourth of July event is quickly coming. In fact, we're, it's June 4th today, so we're a month out now officially. There's going to be, it's gonna start at 11. There'll be bands, food vendors, craft vendors, car show, and more. And of course fireworks in the evening at 10:00. Anson, is there anything else that we should include in there?
I don't think so.
You're one of the committee members.
Was that a hint of anything else you want to add?
No. I was just giving you a opportunity.
You did a good job.
A good summary. And of course, if anyone wanted to help out with being boots on the ground that day, I'm sure they could, they could use some assistance. McMurphy Park Stage Building Benefit Concert happened last Saturday. Friends of Little Falls hosted that again. It was a great concert. I heard that, that it was, it was well worth their time holding that event to try to get some more revenue for the permanent stage. And they've got a couple more coming up later in the summer, and I'll definitely be there because it's, it's a lot of fun. Deputy clerk interviews are continuing. We did find a great candidate for the public worker summer hire, and he's already started this week. John and Darren have him hard at work, doing various things around town. He's a very motivated young man, so. Eric Frampton, Frampton is his name. So say hi to him and, and hopefully we'll have a new deputy clerk for you very, very, very soon. And of course, as I mentioned earlier, Mr. Hall did resign from his council position as of today, so. We'll be looking at filling that appointment for the remainder of the year, probably at the next meeting. So if you have any candidates, bring them forward or let them know. Any council reports? All right, agenda approval.
Make a motion that we approve the agenda for, for June 4th, 2025.
Do a motion for Mr. Parsons to approve the agenda for June 4th. Do we have a second?
A second.
Second by Mr. Hurt. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Minutes approval.
Make a motion that we approve the city council's meeting minutes for May 21st, 2025.
We have a motion by Mr. Hurt to approve the minutes for May 21st. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Parsons. Further discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Voucher approval.
Make a motion, we approve the vouchers for the beginning of June 2025 at $44,232.83. The amended end of May 2025 at $43,481.45.
Do a motion by Mr. Parsons to approve the vouchers as stated. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Hurt. Further discussion? Right, hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Special report, Lewis County Sheriff's Department.
Good morning.
Hello, Mr. Ruben.
For the month of May, there was a total of 452 citizen contacts, four on shift calls, 11 traffic stops, two infractions were written, one criminal citation, and for a total of 22 calls.
And thank you for all the staffing that was at the concert. There was at least a couple of gentlemen there from your office that hung out and enjoyed the music and talked with folks, so.
It sounded like it was pretty good and pretty, pretty calm, too. So that's, that's good. So hopefully everything will stay that way.
Well, it was great. Thank you.
We appreciated their presence.
Any members of the public have any comment tonight?
Do questions count? His comments?
Sure.
So I have a couple of questions. One is with all the fiber going around, has there been any community feedback on providers plus or minus for the slew of choices there are?
I have only heard pluses. I haven't heard of any negative feedback from any of the providers. The installs all went well from everybody. Everyone that's got onto it has had uninterrupted service ever since they've been on.
Are there any providers in particular that have like stood out above the other ones?
I mean, I, I've been using Althea personally, and they've been very professional. I think.
I use Paramount.
You're on Paramount.
Well, I thought Paramount was the installer.
So there was. So Paramount had the contract for the install.
Right.
But they are also a provider, and they're supposed to, they were supposed to not intermingle those businesses, but.
Just saying my name is kind of hard to like separate.
So yeah, so Paramount's one of the providers, and you've said you've had good, good service with them.
I have, too, Paramount. I'm not sure, but I think the majority of providers would count Paramount. Paramount's.
Yeah, yeah, it's quite the coincidence, the way that happened. But these gentlemen here came to one of the council meetings a couple of weeks ago at Vance Stream, and they came and gave a presentation here. So they've actually come down and spent some time in here in the city and so.
Who's the other guy that?
That was Althea. That was, yeah, that was Althea.
We, we used Paramount, too. They were great installing.
Yeah, Paramount's the, the installment. We were like, well, now we've got a lot of choices.
We sent our check to Paramount as well.
I think they're up at Paramount monthly, aren't they? Right.
They're, they're up at Sheil's there, so if there's ever a problem.
Super close.
And Althea's in Australia, yeah. These guys are too. So yeah, I, I think you can't go wrong with, with any of them at this point. They're all eager to serve. And they know that the prices are the same.
Right.
And so they need to stand out with customer service. Just hey, the whole point of the whole system is right to, to have competition, so you're not just stuck with one company that can.
They did give us a, you've got all your cards off the end.
Oh, all right, all right.
Give that to you. All right.
It's a coffee shop, yeah.
We have to elbow for an extra one.
Paramount did rip the hell up my lawn, just tore it apart. But they came back, apologized, laid down grass there. And so we'll come back in a month to make sure it came back. So they're a pretty nice place.
So yeah, and I've had, I've been on, on the fiber internet since February 28th, and I've had no issues with service at all. You know, I know some people here in town, a couple of weeks ago, were saying CenturyLink went out again. You've got used to have CenturyLink on one of your buildings.
Well, you did.
What was the deadline for the grant, the $2,500 grant?
So they only had a certain amount of money, and so it was just until it was used up. I don't know how much homicide is, yeah.
And I mentioned that last meeting, my security system is all battery operated, and they would last a week to two weeks maybe with CenturyLink. And I was just about ready to get rid of it. Once we switched to fiber, it was like eight, nine weeks that I didn't have to change batteries. Sort of like quadrupled in, in the battery life. And we were talking about it last week, like maybe it's because it's looking for a signal all the time instead of just having it. So, yeah, I love it.
My parents and brother-in-law live several miles outside the city limits, and they have Althea, and they haven't had any problems either. So, so yeah, I think, again, I think you can go with anybody and try, try to message them on Facebook or something easy like that and see who gets ahold of you first, and you're the one.
You know, our house, we have cameras on it. We come from Portland, so we have cameras on our house. With CenturyLink, I wasn't getting a clear picture at all. Now with Paramount, I'd be crystal clear. Probably could count the freckles on your face.
Oh, God, okay, I went by past your house. And then I had a second meeting, and it was a follow-up to our meeting in regards to the ordinances and criminalizing and penalizing farmers. And so I was wondering if there's been any discussion yet on changing those ordinances, or if there's been any talk on what that will look like.
Not yet, but I haven't forgotten about it either. Yeah, so definitely it's something that we're gonna follow up on when we get closer to knowing if we can even move forward with this. I don't wanna spend a bunch of money on, on drafting new codes if it's not something we need to do. I will, I will not forget about it.
Growing produce in our yard, missing something. There's restrictions of being major ordinances that don't allow you to accumulate plant matter or fertilize, or create smells, or use heavy machinery, or harvest livestock. So there's a lot of anti-farming wordage that I was concerned about after being told we were going to be annexed as a farm. And so it would restrict a lot of our farm business to have those restrictions.
I believe a lot of that would become lot size based, right, Joe? I mean, not necessarily.
There's, there's a few different ways we could probably, the city could go about it. That'd be one of them, but nothing's been updated. Like I said, I haven't, I haven't put any money towards this just yet, but it's not going to be forgotten.
I don't see any of us being against, like rural farming, or people having a garden, or any of that kind of stuff.
Right.
I like beef.
I like pork.
Pork's good, too.
Animals are cool.
All day long.
All day.
Must be dinner time.
Thanks, Jason, for the BLT. That was dinner.
Other comments from the public tonight?
Is that straight on the agenda?
It is. Okay, moving on to city business. Item number one, council to consider resolution 062025 for planning committee nomination.
I think. I think I'd like to postpone this one until next meeting.
We can postpone it, or we can change it, and use, change the verbiage. If there was some plan. Or we can postpone it.
Yeah, let's just postpone it.
Well, we, Mr. Parsons would like to postpone planning committee nominations at this time. How does the rest of the council feel?
Um, we've had the position open for quite a while, right?
Um, it only became officially vacant on May 31st, so it's only been this last week where it's been vacant, so. We knew it was going to.
I see it only fair that we keep it open at least for 30 days for applicants before we nominate fulfillment for that position.
Ms. Ferguson is in support of postponing it for now. So, Mr. Hurt's nodding and approval, so that's in a majority. So I will postpone planning committee nominations for now. And we'll move on to item number two, council to review the draft six-year transportation improvement program for 2026 to 2031. So as a city that plans under the Growth Management Act, one of our requirements is to update our transportation improvement program every single year and try to have it to Department of Commerce by July 1st. And, and so we'll have a public hearing on this after it gets advertised. There's a SEPA, so it has to go to the state, and so we've got a little bit of time, but I wanted to make sure council took a look at it and give it input before we sent it off. So included in your packet is a list of the things that are gonna get done this summer. I should have included that in the mayor's report. As of today, the city went out for bids for the TIB grant funded street project. So there's seven segments around town. Five of those were on last year's transportation improvement plan. And so that'll take care of those, plus a couple more. And so this year's plan would just be to remove those and then keep everything else that was on that list. And of course, we can add anything. This list does not restrict us from anything. We have to just have a plan. We don't necessarily have to follow it. We don't necessarily have to do it, but we have to have a plan.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
I'm missing something. What does that have to do with transportation in Vator?
So the transportation improvement pro, program would be a list of streets in particular order, and the year that we think we'll get them fixed, as well as the anticipated cost, where we think the funding would come from.
You're talking about asphalting?
Well, it could be anything. It could be asphalt, it could be chip seal, it could be a grind and overlay. It could be all kinds of things.
Okay.
And so like, for instance, this year, we got $116,000 in grant money, and we're gonna completely rebuild Alpine Court, Fifth Street, I Street, C Street, B Street, and.
That's it.
F Street North. We're totally rebuilding it, and so it'll be a brand new road. We can get state funding for that, so.
F Street North.
That's correct.
So the other side of.
Between Eighth and Ninth.
Between Eighth and Ninth.
Close to here.
And so, yeah.
No, not, not anywhere near us on the other side of.
You talked about the second road that's named F Street.
Yeah, F Street North is already a public city. They've named it a damn different names because it's bigger.
Well, they're all, letters go this way, numbers go this way.
I guess it's the middle F Street because there's F Street on the, on the other side of 506 as well.
The third, the third F Street.
So, I mean, there's all these other roads that, things that are in the way, but yeah, but anyway, so.
I'm forgetting to share because I love coming to very meetings. But since you've been mayor, you have presented a mayor's report in detail, and I've never seen that since you became mayor, and I want to thank you for that.
Oh, sure. I'll communicate to the council and, and community members that are interested, what's, what's going on, so. Anyway, so transportation improvement, any, any input from the council? Does it fine the way it is? It pretty much encompasses every other road that's left in town.
Wasn't it just two years ago that a lot of that chip seal?
Yeah, and then, yeah, last year, if we, I went back and looked at last year's agenda for the transportation improvement plan. Similarly, there were, there was a number of roads that we crossed out last year as well because we got them done. And so we're making progress.
Victoria Parsons, my ex-wife, made an interesting comment. She said it's kind of based on the residences, the number of residents on the street. And with that house almost in completion next to me, that would be 14 residents on that short road. So she said it has to do with the volume of residents on the road. She says with more people on the road, your, the street becomes more priority, they, on when they're gonna do asphalting or whatever. I thought that was an interesting comment.
We, I mean, it makes sense that your main arterials, you know, you're gonna try to keep your main streets, your connectors in, in better condition. You know, we had a lot of that done a couple of years ago and, or last year. And one of the great things about this year, a lot of these are the short dead ends, where there aren't a lot of people on it, where, you know, they've been historically, I don't wanna say they get ignored, but obviously not the priority. But these are the ones that, you know, from that street, B and C, and then C over here. Again, these are not, Alpine Court, you know, there's only six or seven homes back there. I Street has one, so.
So is she correct? It's a number of residences, or more people move on the road, the road becomes more priority?
It depends on how, I, I look at how bad it is. I know personally, you know, is it really falling apart? You know, do we need, we need to get it fixed? And sometimes we're limited, like if we grant funding, they won't do certain roads, but they'll do these other ones. So it depends on, on maybe where the state is focusing, so.
The number of roads might even widen up for two cars to pass.
Widening roads has been a, the discussion many times on the council.
Because I, I pull over and let the trash truck pass.
The council doesn't have any other input on that plan? We'll get it sent off. Good?
Yep.
Anyone online? Jason, Mike?
We're good.
Good, yeah. I think 10th, like 10th Street is a, a big one that needs to be widened, and I think the, the county will be taking care of that when they put the road back together.
Yeah, I'm not sure how, why I don't get it, just because there's a lot of stuff in the way. But I know Darren's been talking with them, and I talked with the previous public works manager up there before, a couple of years ago, so we'll see. But it is the first thing on our list if we can, if we can make it happen. So fixing the roads currently.
Widening 10th.
Well, they're gonna be repairing these in the very near future this summer with all the, the construction that did happen. I don't know how much wider 10th is gonna get, probably not a whole lot right now.
I'd say two to three feet.
There's a lot of, lot of kids up here.
Okay, moving on to item number three, council to discuss F Street ownership and review the resident responses. So as you know, a while back, we sent them a, a letter. We had residents of F Street came to the city and asked us to take ownership back again. We did this two years ago as well, I believe. And so we kind of took the temperature back there, figure out, find out how people were feeling. We've got, I think with the email you sent me, we have four, out of the 14 properties, there's four yeses and one maybe. And so that's not even a majority, not even half. So I mean, at this time, I think, again, I don't think there's enough support that the council should do anything. But again, that's up to the council, so I'll open that up to discussion.
I don't care what happens to it, to be quite honest with you, but I, there's, there's always fights going on on F Street, it seems like. It's calmed down a lot this last year, but people will do things in the street, and then they, they'll park in the middle of the road or whatever, and law enforcement can't do anything for it. So then they call all the neighbors, or all these neighbors will call, and it's just a cluster. And so there's that issue, law enforcement not being able to do their stuff down there is one issue. The second issue is the potholes have been horrible because I wasn't doing it. I did have people contribute to me when I, when I did it this last time, but it was, it took a lot out of my tractor to do it because I've got a baby Boda, so it's like dragging a little toothpick around on the road. But it, I think, and every time I'm out there and people pay me to do it, some people contribute, some people don't, but.
Does everybody know when you do it, though?
And I, and I haven't asked anybody for it because that's not the way I'm doing it, but I, I get frustrated because every one of us pays taxes, and those taxes should take care of our road. The other issue that I just got today is I'm wanting to build a house. And it's going to be 1024 F Street, probably, right there. And one of the lenders said today said no because it's under 1,000 people in the city of Vator, and it's a gravel road.
Okay, but Ian did have problems building his three houses.
It doesn't stop anyone at all.
Ian, yes, and I'm still gonna get it done. I'll still get it done regardless, but it's just one other thing that, and we're not going to get on this list for pavement. And so me, I'd love to see it done, and then we don't have to worry about it. Potholes start coming, we call John and say, hey, come scrape our road, it's ready. And it gets done.
Eric, I volunteered. We will gladly take over this road and do all the work with no problem. We will not ask for any money. We will rent any equipment and take care of it for the next six years. We have to live in this state. Wow.
That is between you and the other property.
That's pretty generous.
So.
I just have to be here until my kids graduate from high school.
Are you going to haul along the lot that's next to me?
We don't get to.
I don't know. I have both, there's two lots that are next to you. There's the one that's right next to you, and then another one between, on the, on both sides of that garden. So.
Yeah, that manufacturing is almost ready to put a listing sign down.
Yeah.
You're talking about the lot on the other side of me.
Okay, are they selling it?
Why are the neighbors, nicks in the idea of the city taking back over and taking care of the road?
Okay, well, first of all, I spent $10,500 on asphalt for my portion, and I have a copy that I will gladly provide to each of you up here today. I've also retained counsel because it's a violation of the Fifth Amendment to try and take someone's property without proper compensation. So I had my company come back yachts and redesign the entire easement so that if they wanna give back easements from the end of my concrete fort, be my guest, but I want them to sign off that that is my easement because I spent the money on it, and then they can do what they want with the rest of it. I'm at the end, I'm not blocking anybody's exits. I'm not, you know, trying to cause any problems whatsoever, but.
So, so where your asphalt came out to the street?
Yeah.
And I'm just trying to understand this. How far is it past your property line?
So it's to my, it's where my property line is, and then there's like 100 and 136 and a half square feet of that corner piece that's in the yellow that belongs to Tanner. And the peak portion belongs to Derek. However, there's a fence there because the road is not straight, it actually curves. So even though it looks like it's straight on here, it actually curves into Derek's property. So a majority of that property is mine with just a little bit of the asphalt being his and the fence line, and then part of his land is part of our actual easement.
But if the city takes back over the street, and I'm, I'm just trying to learn, okay?
Yeah, right.
I'm not providing anything. If they take it back over, it's an 80-foot easement?
No.
Down that road?
It's a 30-foot.
Is it 30 or, or is it?
That one's 30.
30? Well, it would need to be recreated, and so it can be made, it would be made at whatever we want it to be made at.
So it's going to.
So it could be 30.
Because nobody can park our cars, it's going to interfere with the fence that Derek put up. It's, and it's taking back, like whoever wrote the letter and sent it to us that said that they would be taking the road with no compensation. with no compensation, obviously did not seek legal counsel before they sent that letter because it's actually illegal to do that. And I have the article quoted in my letter that I just presented. Uh, even if you do the eminent domain, the process is still just compensation. It has to be fair market value for what's been done. They can't just take it. So that's why I'm here to stand my ground on my property because I've worked very, very, very hard for what I had. Um, I've just put in, you know, 80 hours a week during COVID in healthcare and to care people in nursing homes to make sure that I have a house that's in a safe area, that's, you know, as nice as it can be for what we have. We did try to move, but unfortunately my ex-husband won't sign off on it. So we are stuck in this beautiful, expensive state for the next six years. Uh, and I'm not just going to hand over what I've worked for.
It all stemmed years ago when she did some land research and some documentation. And she found out that the, the road in front of her home was grandfathered in as part of property that she owns. And so when she found that out, that she owned that, she black topped it and put a gate and a fence up when she found out that she owned that property in front of her house. That's where it all started.
Right, through legal survey, through this company.
And through conversation with Mike the other day and his wife, he said, Diane, we're not trying to, excuse me, expand the road. What we're trying to do is get the city to take over the road from private. That way, any vehicles that are parked on the road, we're going to get rid of it. We're going to, we're going to tell them they can't do that anymore. That's a hallelujah for me.
And we haven't had that issue in over a year. Kim has two cars that she parks right up against her fence and she's the only one that's ever been out there for any bit of.
Yeah, she's the only one that parks on that road at all.
So in, in, in the past, you've had cars parked out there that didn't move?
She did on purpose because she was fighting with us and through several trips to the county and restraining orders and, and being in front of a judge and they had to retain attorneys. I've retained attorneys. They finally have come to terms with the fact that they can't just block the easement. And like where I'm at, I'm at the very end, so I'm not blocking anybody because I'm at the, where the easement actually ends.
Ruben, what is the law for abandoned vehicles on the road?
They weren't abandoned.
They would just park their car. They don't move then they're, for a certain amount of time and they're considering a ban.
Whoever is the one that's abandoned at that property, I don't think it works and it's sitting on the road.
So what, what is it?
It, it varies. I mean, if it's a public roadway, it's different than a private roadway. And depending on if it's blocking.
And if it, it's if it's a private road, then you can't do anything on it?
Well, it depends. I mean, if it's like a semi-truck that's blocking, like everybody who's getting access to their, their property, we do have a little bit of ability, but if people can drive around it, that changes that dynamic.
So with it being a private road, and Mike was saying that you, you guys don't have authority to go in on that road? What if there's a 911 call, then you're able to go in there or?
No, I might've, I might've misconstrued that. They can go on there for that, but if there is, like somebody just parks their car in the middle of the road, they can ask them to, to move it, but it's a civil matter because it's a private road.
It's not a civil matter anywhere you go. I mean, if that residence decided not to put up a cedar fence to block their trash and broken toys, they could have used that area in the backyard for parking. So they kind of brought the problems on themselves. It's wide enough to do what I've done and Mike has done. We put gravel and sand, which over time hardens like cement.
So is that, is that fence on the road or is it on their property?
It's on their property.
On their property?
Yeah, I mean, they could have decided to use that backyard for parking because it's big enough to, to vehicles. Then there would be nothing parked on the road at all, ever, you see? Because the road is narrow and the concern is emergency vehicles, moving trucks, delivery trucks. I mean, there's all kinds, all kinds of traffic. The residents on that road do a lot of online purchasing. I'm a, purchases on my front porch, I need to admit. I'm an online lady twice a week. So, I mean, they're coming down constantly and maybe a fire truck or some other big vehicle. Uh, they, they need the whole road because sometimes that narrow road, they need more space to get that large vehicle down the road. And Kim's cars parked on the road really shouldn't be there. And I interpreted Mike's comment is that the city takes over this, they won't allow that anymore. They'll tell them to move their cars somewhere else so that we have clear way on the road. I interpreted it as that. And he said, the only thing that's good that the city takes over is that his little tractor, great, it won't be ruined. Somebody else will take over. The city will do that. Like I said, it's really not widening the road. It's that we want the city to take over responsibility of the potholes and getting rid of cars that should not be parked on the road. And that's A, so.
But they can't do that.
Triggering the letter.
The, the other thing that, um, it's not just parking, but, and this has happened in the past. It doesn't happen very often now, but you can, I could go down to the end of F Street and I could spin my tires and do Brody's all the way up to 10th. And there's nothing you could do about it because I'm on my own private property.
Yeah.
Unless it's reckless or something.
And I'm kind of new at this and Joe, you might be able to help out with this. If the city took it back over and widened the road a little bit, but you're able to keep that portion of the road for yourself, you know, where you're.
And that's what this is about. That's exactly what this is about, that if it didn't go our way to keep it private, that, that they would sign off that the easement would end where my concrete begins because I spent the money and the time to develop my property. But, I mean, what he's saying about spinning the tires and stuff, there's no one out there that does that. We have cameras on our property. That hasn't happened since Kim stopped doing it. And the cars are also not in the way. My UPS trucks, my FedEx trucks, the garbage trucks, they get down a road with no problem. For Kim's two cars, they're literally parked right up against their ramp that they need for the old lady to come out in the fence. It's like touching as much as it can. They only have a very small portion of property. Their property is only like, not even point one five of an acre because when Larry Fickles sold the four lots, Ian bought three of them and he bought the house that Jennifer lives in, that Donnie lives in and that Tanner lives in now. And they sold it as a rent to own for Kim and Eileen to rent to own the mobile home that stayed there because they couldn't afford to leave. So that's how they ended up with such a small chunk of land to begin with. But they used to have like four or five cars there and a ton of people that lived there, but now they don't. They had a camper trailer on there and now they don't, like people were living in it. People were living in the shed in the yard. Now they don't, so.
Yeah, they have a lot of extra people living in the home and a lot of visitors. And so all those extra people living in the home, whether they're paying rent or just staying there and guests, the whole road is packed, like some, sometimes up to six vehicles blocking everything. And I'm just saying, if they didn't put up the fence, they could have put gravel and rag and they could have had two vehicles parked in the backyard, but that's their choice. But I, I interpreted from Mike's conversation with him and his wife, that it's not that we want to widen the road, that's not the issue. We want the city to take over so they can take care of the potholes and the gravel. I don't have to do it. Plus any vehicles that should not be on the road, the city will say, you know, you gotta, gotta move them out of the way. Sometimes my grass area in front of my cedar fence and my 14-foot wide gate, I spent thousands of dollars on that. I just didn't want that destroyed. I'm the maybe on that list and Joe knows that.
I got a no from you. The maybe was somebody else.
Oh, okay, interesting. Cause I think I said a comment in.
Two maybes.
So how does this, how does the city feel about taking it over? And, and, and make it a city road where we just fill the potholes and Ruben's able to go in and take care of business?
Well, we talked to the, the, this is, you know, two years ago originally and we had a number of this residents on F Street come to the council meeting and say, hey, can you look at taking this back? And so we talked to this, the attorney and the engineer and kind of came up with what would be the least expensive way for the city to do this because, you know, there, there's the expensive ways and inexpensive ways. Obviously, right now, inexpensive would be the, the route that we would entertain. And so we put that letter together and sent it out to the residents to see if a majority or all were so sick of dealing with the F Street problems that they wanted to work with the city and we could get this thing done. A majority of the residents or, or at least the respondents were a no. Like don't, we don't, we'd rather just keep it the way it is than, than do the proposal. You know, and the proposal does, it does include. It's, it would be, I think that last year, last time it was, um, it was a 40-foot right of way. But since then, over the last two years, the city has worked with developers on 30-foot wide right of ways. And you, you ask, why does it need to be 30 feet? Well, because, so that in the future, if the, if the city wanted to, there'd be enough for two travel lanes, parking on one side, a sidewalk on one side. Obviously, that's not something that we would do immediately, but we're all going to be dead in 150 years. Who knows what F Street will be in 150 years?
I'll be older than that.
Okay. And so we're not thinking about now, you know, we don't want to spend all this money and time to dedicate the road back to the city and have it be 10-foot wide and not be able to do these things with it in the future. If we were to do this, the right way to do it is, you know, a 30-foot right of way, which is still a very narrow, which is, which is still very narrow. And so that would be the proposal is that we would get a 30-foot right of way through there. So at some point in the future, the city could develop it out. Obviously, F Street wouldn't be the first one. We haven't done all this with all the other roads, so it wouldn't, it wouldn't be the first one on the list.
It came out and sprayed an orange square where the center of the easement is. It's going to cut into like over half of Tanner's front yard. So all the bushes that the builder Ian took there would have to be cut out.
And it's pretty normal. I mean, like for instance, I live on D Street. D Street is an 80-foot right of way. That's my entire front yard. Literally, D Street would be against my, my, my front porch if the road was as wide as, as what it is. Um, that's the way it is everywhere in town for everybody. The right of ways are much wider than the actual roadways.
Is right of way just for like utilities and?
The right of way would be the city road. So there's.
So the whole thing could be a road like up to your front porch?
Yeah, it could be. Um, and so, um, so anyway, so two years ago, the council said, all right, I don't know if people are interested, you know, we're not going to go the eminent domain around and take people's property. It was going to be a willful thing. They wanted, we're all going to work together. So we just dropped it. Well, and again, here now this year, um, again, a number of residents came to the city and said, we were sick of this. Hey, try to take it back. And so we sent another letter out to get, kind of take the temperature back there. And again, either folks didn't respond or were no, and there were only four, four yeses out of 14. And so that's kind of where we are now.
Maybe a third.
The, yeah, the, the, the majority either don't care, don't respond, or, or they're a no. So, um, I mean, as far as my recommendation to the council is just, you know, it's kind of a, the residents need to work together to figure out a way to take care of the road unless.
And we will gladly do that. We're here for 36 years. When Kaylee graduates.
And that's, and that's fine. Again, that's, that's, that's great. And that's, that's kind of back in the nineties when the thing was, when the city vacated and the people that lived there, that was what they were going to do. They were going to work together and take care of this road because the city couldn't. Um, and then of course all those people die or move away and then you all get to inherit their, their decision. And so, and there was no, you know, if you were to do this kind of thing today, if the city were to vacate a road today with residents on it, you'd make sure that there was proper agreements, you know, almost like a homeowners association kind of deal where people would throw money into a pot every, every year and take care of the road, things like that. Um, but that wasn't done, you know, back in the day. So not that the nineties were back in the day, but.
So it's official as of tonight? It's a dropped issue?
It's up to the council. What is, what is the council, what does the council think, given the facts?
Have we been proposed with a dollar amount from the, the landowners that are giving up their space?
A dollar amount for if the city were to do the project?
No, to take over, take over the property.
Well, I mean, I mean, I don't think, I mean.
I've seen, I've seen receipts for the, the attorney fees and like that kind of stuff. So I kind of know what that's going to cost, but I mean, the, she seems pretty upset about asphalt that she put there and, um, she's going to have fences that are going to have to be moved and all that, so. Has she approached the city with the dollar amount that she has in mind for the footage?
No, not yet because I just came in, because Mike told me that we were discussing it, but I can have my attorney draw up something and send it to you. That's fine. But it's probably going to be about $25,000 to $30,000 for that piece of land and my asphalt and my fencing.
Well, you figure what, you know, what's the, what's the going rate for property in the city, you know, and you're talking about.
I say let her keep it. Let her keep it. It's mute point. The city can move on to other things.
But you know, you figure, all right, you know, if you were to make a 30-foot right of way and there's the road down, the, the existing driveway down the middle, you know, this property owner on this side would get, whatever the market rate is, for 15 feet wide by, you know, however their frontage is, if their frontage is 75 feet. You know, it's a, you know, it's a piece of property, 15 feet by 75 feet, you know, what is, you know, what is that in square feet compared to market value? It's probably $8,000 or something like that, you know? And so you're looking at, you know, most of the homeowners would probably get $8,000 for the, for the stretch. That's probably the market value, um, on a, on a vacant, for vacant property in, in the city. And so, you know, individually, the property owners probably wouldn't get very much money. But for the city to do that right now, um, you know, it would be, it would be very costly and obviously we don't, we can't do that, which is why, one of the reasons we, we reached out in the way we did was the proposal was that the, uh, property owners, since they would get so much out of the deal, which is getting the road maintained and having better access and all that, that they, they'd willfully, you know, transfer the, the ownership of that little strip of property into the city, into the city's name.
That's our compensation. Yeah, yeah, it's only going to, it's only going to be.
Well, some, well, but there, that's the problem is, that's the thing. You have a number of neighbor, neighbors who do feel that it's worth that to have the road indefinitely taken care of in the right way.
Because they own any part of it. They live in that part, that's why.
But, um, it, it, that's, that's not the way the majority feels. Obviously, the city can't do anything about it right now as far as paying $100,000 for a bunch of property, for a road, just so that we could just then turn around and start investing money into it to take care of the road. You know, I don't want to say we're doing it out of the kindness of our heart, but, you know, we're, we're trying to help people out and the folks, the majority of people don't necessarily want to be helped. They're perfectly fine with the way it is. And so my recommendation is just to drop it for now.
I'd just say, yeah.
The irony in my particular situation is that I try to do everything correct. I try, I always get permission. I'll just go ahead and do things without asking. And I went purposely physically down to City Hall five or six years ago and I said, I want to put up a fence. I need some privacy from the stuff that's across the street. I don't want to look at. So, um, where do I need to put it? How high and all that? City Hall said, it can't be any more than four feet tall because emergency vehicles come down. They need to be able to see the address on your house. I said, okay, we got it. It has to be 15 feet from the center of the road back. That's where you're going to put your fence. I said, okay, you're the boss. That's exactly what I did. So if the city wants to come in and destroy what's there, it's there because of the instructions I got from City Hall. That's the irony.
Ma'am, that, that, that wouldn't happen. It's destroyed. They would, if, if this happened and they had to widen the road for any reason, your fence needed to be moved and that construction crew would move your fence to the appropriate position. It would, it, it wouldn't get destroyed and then.
Yes. He's, and the other thing is, is your fence is 15 feet from the center.
Actually, I think it's further back.
Yes, mine's, mine's like 16 or 17. That metal pole is 15 feet from the center. And then if you go from that metal pole to Matt's fence, that's 30 feet.
Who's Matt? He's behind you?
We live with Fortress House, a lot of big bushes.
We're buried in it.
That one's your house? Yeah, he's next to the other one's house.
Yeah.
He's, he's next to Noah.
Oh, the other one of the cyclone gate.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
The old house.
And that, and we went out and measured it the other day and that's 30 feet right there. And so if you went off of, which I don't care what happened. Recommend everybody though, if there becomes an. Recommend everybody though, if there becomes an issue, because I get texts and emails and calls, call the city and let them know. Because I've brought this to the city council by instruction of people on the road twice now. And they're like, we want to give it back, we want to give it back. And then they just don't show up and they don't know. And it's like, well, crap. All right, so I'm all good with it, 30 feet. The one thing that you should think of though, is that road goes like this. So when we find the center of that 30 feet, I think, and this is off the city side of it, as residents of F Street, we should all kick in, have the road surveyed and go 30 feet off of each side so that we find the center. Because that road.
No problem, I just had that done.
That, that road goes.
It's already been done.
That road goes like, like this. And I think I've got my section good, but then the road curves. And it's like, why would the road curve if it's a straight line?
I thought it was a straight line and now, now it's different.
You can come down to my house and look and see where that little orange square is that they painted. That's the center of the easement, which is showing you that a majority of the asphalt is mine. And that's how this little yellow square that I gave you, that's how that little tiny piece belongs to Tanner. And the pink part belongs to Derek, but the fence is in the middle of it. Because it curves, which is why I'm going to find my council this. But I just paid for this, this survey.
I'll show the surveyor post with you. Because I thought it was a straight line. And the, the fence people came out and measured exactly 15 feet from the center and back. It's actually a little bit further back than your post, so I think I'm in the clear. I'm the one, I thought that I was maybe Joe. Because this year I tried to come up with some different solutions rather than to say, no, no, leave me alone. I tried to come up with some solutions. And I shared it with Mike and Victoria and she kind of laughed. And I said, well, here's first idea, that half of the road is city, half of the road is private. And I said, the potholes all start in front of Noah's house, in front of Mike's property. That's where the potholes start every year and they go all the way to 10th Street. So I said, why can't you make city that half of the road? And it gets asphalted and widened and whatever. Then you've only got four residents to ask instead of 14.
Oh, so like the north side, the north half of.
Let's just give you the potholes. Can you just do the potholes for me?
That's the issue for our road, not the frigging easement. It's the potholes because it's not just the residents, Joe. It's all the vehicles that traffic up and down the road.
Yeah, I saw UPS guy and my just told him, I about yelled at him the other day.
Sounds like you guys need an F Street coalition.
That's, that's the thing is, and share it with everybody. When you speed on a dirt road, it causes little whipples. And then when it rains, which it rains here all the time, each one of those little ripples gives a puddle. And when you hit that puddle, it washes some of the dirt out.
And there are. Push the accelerator, we're going by between 5 and 10 miles an hour, not an accelerator.
There are speeders because he sees them, he knows who they are.
And it's one person, it's one person.
And so, anyway. It's a dead deal.
So you're, you're, you're done? John, you're, you're done?
And I promise you.
Jason, Mike, any, anyone has any other input on this? Do we want to continue anything further with F Street or are we good for a couple of more years?
And I promise you.
I'm, I'm kind of over it myself.
All right.
And I will not bring it back to the city council.
Okay.
Myself. I'll forward the calls on to.
To me, my number's on the.
To Kristen.
It's mine.
All good.
It's on everybody's door, so they can call me, text me, anytime.
All right, well, that's the majority of the council, so, uh, done with F Street for a couple more years. So that's the end of city business. Any other elected officials' comments?
Yeah, I wanted to go back to item one of city business. I wanted to applaud and mention that I appreciate Nicole's desire to engage in city business and the future of the city and her involvement. I, I really appreciate that. I just think that we need to keep it open for 30 days to see if anyone else wants to apply and make it a fair process.
Are you talking to city council or the planning commission?
The planning.
The planning commission.
So my question, since he brought this back up. I know that Nicole and I both are going to run in November for these two seats right here. What is the problem with putting her in the seat now? If she, if she's willing to do it?
Put her in the seat for city council?
Yeah.
Uh, there's no problem. She, she could take a planning commission seat and then if she wins the election for council, then she would have to resign from the planning committee.
Well, we were only talking about the, the planning committee seat. Traditionally, and again, the city council can do whatever they want with a, with a, with a council vacancy. Council has 90 days to fill a council vacancy. Usually, we wait at least until the next meeting so that any interested folks can get an application in for the vacant council seat. And so that's kind of a separate issue from the, from the planning committee.
So Nicole, if she wanted to, could fill out another application for this vacant seat of Randy's?
Nicole could, and anybody could. Could submit an application for a city council position. So we just have not, we have 90 days to fill it. And if we don't fill it within 90 days, then somehow the county fills it. With all their.
I'm sorry, I have to tie in sections, I'm going to go.
Okay. So, any other elected official comments? This meeting's adjourned at 7:01 PM.